I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a proclamation tonight, first thing? Mr. Huckle?
This is one of those things I like to do, Nick.
Come on up here. We have a proclamation, Nicholas, signed by the mayor, and it says, "Whereas the annual Fourth of July celebration theme for 2004 has been designated 'Let Freedom Ring,' and whereas the Rouses Point Elementary Classes of Northeastern Clinton Central School were asked to participate by submitting a drawing to be used as a T-shirt designed for this event, and whereas Nicholas Sisson, a fifth grader at Rouses Point Elementary School, submitted an entry which was chosen for the Fourth of July Celebration Committee as the winning entry, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rouses Point will like to thank Nicholas for his efforts in designing this drawing, and further be it resolved that George A. Rivers, Mayor of the Village of Rouses Point, presents Nicholas with this proclamation and a T-shirt honoring his outstanding efforts." And this is signed by the mayor. Nick, congratulations. You did a great job. And this is your T-shirt. And that is what you're designing. Didn't he do a great job? Absolutely beautiful. Are we getting invited for the parade? He will be riding in the parade. We want him in the parade. We have to find a convertible. All right? Congratulations, Nick. You did a great job. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're very welcome, sir. I open the meeting. Comments in the public at this time? Anybody in the wish to address the board may do so at this time. You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. There's going to address the board. We'll go on to minutes of the previous meeting. You all have copies. As are any additions or deletions. Does Donna entertain a motion?
All votes that leave except the minutes is written.
I'll second that. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? No discussion. All is a favorable vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. Any additions or deletions, I say?
No.
Will they make a motion to pay the bills, Phil? Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is a favorable vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents.
We have three pieces of correspondence tonight. The first one was from Norman Kolotsky, president of the Quanis Club of Rouses Point Champagne, addressed to Mayor, Dear Mayor Rivers, on behalf of the Quanis Club of Rouses Point-Champlain, I would like to indicate strong support for the waterfront revitalization project on Montgomery Street. Increasing public access to the waterfront will bring more visitors to the village and make the downtown more attractive to businesses. All of this will make Rouses Point a more desirable place to live than it is now, bringing in more residents and adding to the membership of service clubs like Quanis. In short, this project is a winner for all involved, and I look forward to its completion. Next letter is from Chris Ortloff, Assistant Minority Leader. It's to Mayor Rivers. Dear George, thank you for your recent correspondence with my office concerning the Rouses Point Waterfront Revitalization Project. I am in full support of this effort, for not only will it add to the beauty and charm of Rouses Point, it will along bring economic development to the downtown area. Enhancing public access to Lake Champlain will expand the recreational opportunities for both residents and visitors. If you should need any further assistance in this matter or others, feel free to contact my office. Sincerely, Chris. And the next letter we have is a letter dated June 14th. It was from William Favreau. He works in the Law Office of O'Connell in Arnowitz. And it was sent to Mayor Rivers and to Town Supervisor Bruce Walla, and it's regarding Dennis Richard property in the town of Champlain. It says, "Dear Mayor and Supervisor, this office represents Dennis Richard and D.E. Richard and Son Inc. in connection with various matters. As you know, Mr. Richard has undertaken development of his property located in the town of Champlain, which borders the Delaware-Hudson Railroad and the Village of Rouses Point. At this time, he is interested in pursuing further commercial and residential development of his property. Thus far, he has incurred expenses in excess of $167,000 for the installation and paving of 2,200 feet of road, a core boring beneath the railroad tracks for installation of water and sewer utilities, as well as installing approximately 850 feet of water and sewer service lines. Mr. Richard is interested in conveying these to a municipality. He would propose to transfer the utility lines and road for 75% of his cost of installing these items. Beyond this issue, he would then be interested in working with the municipality to pursue both the commercial and residential development of the remaining property. This correspondence is to advise in Mr. Richard's interest and to request proposals from either municipality to determine whether there is any interest in working with him in this regard. We would then work jointly toward accomplishing this development to the benefit of all parties. Very truly yours, William Favreau." And that's all. There's the correspondence.
Any comments on correspondence at all?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I would hope Mr. Richards would come to the meeting and discuss a few things, because I think there's a number of questions and concerns, and all we've received is just a letter. So, the only thing that I know so far is that he sent the letter. So, I mean, I know he's talked to George, and George and I have had a conversation about that. But, the big question is, how long would it take the village to recoup the investment if we're going to spend approximately $100,000 on this investment? So, I don't know if this is the correct way to expand our village infrastructure. Usually what we do is we put these items out for bid, in a competitive bid, and award them accordingly. And he's gone ahead and done this, and, I mean, I'm all in favor of developing this stuff, but before we commit to a large amount of money like that, I think we all should be in tune with him, and, you know, I think he should have come here, and I hope he does come here. I talked to Jules Tran the other day. Of course, they've received a letter from the town of Champlain, and, you know, they're not too hot on him. So, I'm going to invite Mr. Richards to come to the next board meeting or when he can, so we can discuss this. That's all I really want to say about it.
Anyone else? Reports of the mayor and trustees. Guess what? I'll have another one. Has another week off. Trustee Huckle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to read a legal notice regarding the zoning board of appeals. We need to read the whole thing, don't we, Phil?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Phil, see you in the parade. We'll be in touch. Rouses Point, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Rouses Point will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 12, 2004, at 4:30 p.m., or shortly thereafter at Halsted Hall located at the Rouses Point Civic Center, 39 Lake Street, Rouses Point, New York. The purpose of this public hearing is that John Mott, 97 Montgomery Street, needs an area variance to install an eight-foot by 28-foot storage container on the north side of his service shop. Also, Dan Leduc has requested a special use permit, change of occupancy, to build a 20-by-30 building for a seasonal ice cream stand on his property located at 110 Lake Street. Persons wishing to attend such hearings may do so in person or by legal representation. The meeting of the zoning board of appeals will follow the public hearing. Someone needed just the announcement, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Second item. Update on the July 4th celebration. We just finished our last meeting before the celebration, and I do have to announce, I have done press releases as of last Tuesday, that the car show had to be canceled because the people that were going to take some notice of the car show just did not feel as though they could do an adequate job in the amount of time they had. So, that will not be happening this year. All other activities are on. Parade, I think, what did they say, Brian? 57 units at the sitting? Something like that?
Yeah, I think we're up over 60 now.
Over 60 now. And, so, the parade will be going on on Sunday evening, but we don't. Best parade in the North Country. Always has been. And we're looking forward to it. And I would like to announce that in today's paper, Dr. Shelby Southwick has accepted the invitation to be the grand marshal for our parade, and he will be riding in the car driven by Mr. Walt Barker, Mark Schumpert's convertible car, by Mr. Walt Barker. Not his own car, but we told him behind him. And so, and the rest of the activities are on as planned, and we're looking forward to it. And that's all for the Fourth of July. Mr. Penfield, would you provide an update regarding the waterfront project?
The four members have packets that I passed out from last week, and despite request to read the entirety of the packet, I'll only answer any questions you have. We are submitting the two grants for the balance of funding required to complete the waterfront project, the scenic pier. We have one that is in progress going to Office of Parks, Rec, and Historic Preservation, and one going to the Department of State Division of Coastal Resources. And so, what I have before you tonight are three resolutions that are required for those grant submissions. One is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the grant for Department of State. One is a resolution for Parks, Rec., and Historic Preservation. And the third is a resolution reaffirming Rouses Point's local waterfront revitalization program. The first two are pretty standard. They're the same, I believe, as the board has dealt with for other grants. The third resolution is a requirement that personally I was very glad to see instituted when I looked at the grant application. I really give the New York State credit. They are trying, I believe, to send their grant money to communities that have plans in place. And so, when you submit this grant to the Office of Parks, Rec., and Historic Preservation, they want to be able to see how your grant application fits in with the plan. So, we have the Clinton Essex Revitalization Program that was done in 1997, and Rouses Point's own feasibility study that was done in 2000 with Empire State Development money from Governor Pataki. And I'm just asking that the board reaffirm those two documents as Rouses Point's local waterfront revitalization program. There will be an opportunity very soon to update those plans. They are a few years old. Clinton County has just received grant money to do an update for the regional waterfront revitalization program, and I expect that the village will want to be part of that. We were very much involved in the 1997 effort. In fact, some of the packet I gave you refers to a meeting that was actually held in Rouses Point. Rouses Point was identified as one of the demonstration programs. And, so, we will be able to be a part of that, and of course, we're planning on a public visioning process for the village, at which point we'll also be getting additional ideas for the waterfront. And now that I've talked longer than I meant to do, does anyone have any questions for me that I can answer?
I just have a comment. I think it's very important that people in the community understand the relationship between the waterfront development and equality communities designation. And I think that it's really important that we reiterate that so that people from the community understand the importance of finishing what has begun on the waterfront in order to proceed with our other plans for equality community that we have for our...
Yes.
If you'd like me to just review that briefly?
I think it would be very helpful.
Certainly. Rouses Point's designation as equality community stems directly from the waterfront project that was begun in 1999 with a $200,000 check awarded to the mayor from Governor Pataki. That was a result of Rouses Point's participation in the Clinton Essex Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. And so, you can trace the line on this. The equality communities program was actually begun by the Department of State Division of Coastal Resources. They're the waterfront people. And they, when Rouses Point was brought to their attention as a result of county legislator Parkett's bringing the Secretary of State to Rouses Point, they began, became involved in our waterfront project. And so, it is the, basically, it's the foundation of equality communities in Rouses Point. They then also led us into the downtown revitalization program, which really had been ongoing in the village for years with the beautification efforts and so on. But those two things, waterfront and downtown revitalization, fit together under the equality communities banner. And in order to continue in the program, we certainly have been led to understand that completion of the waterfront project is necessity. And certainly, we will have something very beautiful to show when the project is complete. The waterfront project, just to review, includes the boat launch improvements, steel reinforcing and improvements to the actual ramp into the lake, parking lot improvements there, a park adjacent to the state dock about, let's say about 350 to 400 feet, where we'll have a nice walkway, benches, what they call park amenities for people to come sit, enjoy the water. Funding for both of those pieces is in place already. The village received a $200,000 grant in 2002 from the Office of Parks and Recreation. Then, the mayor just traveled to Lake George a couple of weeks ago to receive a second grant, this time from the Department of State, for $200,000. And those two pieces are ready to go. What we're looking for now is the money to finish the scenic pier, which to me is kind of the showpiece of the three-piece park. Hope that helped.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The resolutions at this time? Phil?
Mr. Administrator, would you read the resolutions one at a time so that we can act on them individually, please?
Okay. First one has to do with the Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation. Whereas the Village of Rouses Point is committed to the revitalization of its waterfront, and whereas the village seeks funding sources to help complete their waterfront project, therefore be it resolved that George A. Rivers as mayor of the Village of Rouses Point is hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funds from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation in accordance with the provisions of Title IX of the Environmental Protection Act of 1993, or the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund Act of 1965, in an amount not to exceed $350,000, and upon approval of said request to enter into and execute a project agreement with the state for such financial assistance to this village for construction of a scenic pier on the site of the former state dock, and if appropriate, a conservation easement slash preservation covenant to the deed of the assisted property.
I'll move that to the floor. Need a second?
I'll second, Doc.
Moved by trustee Huckle, seconded by trustee Jefferson. This is a roll call vote. Trustee Huckle.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And the second one has to do with the Department of State. Whereas the Village of Rouses Point is committed to the revitalization of its waterfront, and whereas the village seeks funding sources to help complete their waterfront project, therefore be it resolved that George A. Rivers as mayor of the Village of Rouses Point is hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funds from the New York State Department of State Division of Coastal Resources for construction of a scenic pier on the site of the former state dock on Montgomery Street to act on behalf of the Village Board of Trustees in all matters related to this financial assistance, and to certify the information contained in this application.
And I'll move that to the floor.
Second.
Moved by trustee Huckle, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote. Trustee Huckle.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
And the last one is the one Melissa was talking about with regard to the local Clinton County and the Essex County communities. Whereas the Village of Rouses Point has been pursuing waterfront revitalization over the past decade, and whereas the Clinton County Planning Office coordinated efforts to prepare a comprehensive regional local waterfront revitalization project in 1997, which would serve as a local waterfront revitalization plan for Clinton and Essex County communities. Whereas the village participated in regional planning efforts to prepare the local waterfront revitalization project for Clinton and Essex County, and whereas the Clinton and Essex County Local Waterfront Revitalization Project specifically addresses Rouses Point's waterfront resources and opportunities, and whereas the Clinton and Essex County Local Waterfront Revitalization Project identified utilizing Rouses Point's publicly owned land to increase access to the waterfront and to improve its appearance as a regional priority. And whereas the village commissioned a waterfront revitalization feasibility study in May of 2000 to develop projects that supported the goals identified in the Clinton and Essex County Local Waterfront Revitalization Project, and whereas public input was solicited from village residents as the waterfront revitalization feasibility study was prepared, and whereas the waterfront revitalization feasibility study identified improvements to the village, boat launch, shoreline improvements along Montgomery Street, and creation of a scenic pier on the site of the former state dock as priority waterfront revitalization projects. And whereas the Village of Rouses Point is in the process of improving its boat launch and creating a waterfront park on Montgomery Street, and is actively seeking funding to complete its waterfront revitalization project with the rehabilitation of the former state dock as a scenic pier. Therefore be it resolved, the Village of Rouses Point Board of Trustees hereby reaffirms the Clinton and Essex County Local Waterfront Revitalization Project and the Village of Rouses Point Waterfront Revitalization Feasibility Study as the Village of Rouses Point's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Plan.
And I will move that to the floor.
Second.
Moved by trustee Huckle, seconded by trustee Penfield. Roll call vote. Trustee Huckle.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Huckle. Trustee Penfield.
Okay. First item that I have tonight is an update on the upcoming sewer project in the village. We have a committee meeting on Thursday afternoon to discuss, basically, the plans for the upgrade on the wastewater treatment plant itself as opposed to anything having to do with the piping along the road. Aaron Jarvis gave us a fairly thorough review of those plans. They intended to be submitting them to the DEC hopefully by the end of this week. I don't know, Doug, whether that is still correct or not, as far as we know.
The rest of my knowledge is that it's scheduled.
I guess normally the DEC review takes four to eight weeks. John Carr was interested in hopefully getting some sort of consent order in about four weeks, and putting together a bid strategy where we can simultaneously go out for all of the different parts that the bid will encompass, including putting the outfall line in as well. He was fairly adamant that the work needs to happen at the same time, and that also for our cost control, that that's really the best way to go. So, I asked him what he would be needing from us in order to accomplish all of these plans, and his hope is that in the first meeting of July, they can be giving us an update on the final scope of the project as well as getting some sort of budget approval, and then we can vote to proceed. So, whether or not that is when we'll be going out to bid, I would guess probably not. But I would guess that at least we'll have the final scope and the budget approval, maybe with one more committee meeting thrown in there as well. If we look at four to eight weeks for the DEC review, then we could be in August. So, at this point, it's a little bit difficult to tell. I think he was planning on being here this evening, but...
Yes, he was. I received a phone call from him, and he had a flat tire, and he asked me to call him around 7:00 to see where he was at, and I called around 7:00, and I think his cellphone's dead, too. So, it must be Monday. So, he was trying.
So, anyway, so that was the plan, and I guess that they'll have an update at our next meeting, first meeting of July, if you're aware. So, and Ernie Barkum was also at that meeting. So, it was a fairly thorough review, and I think that we're going to end up with something that'll be very much what Tom and Ernie are interested in. So, I think in that way, it's very good that we continue to have these updates. And the second item that I have this evening is a resolution having to do with an easement for the sewer outfall line. It's something that's required, I guess, in order for us to proceed. So, I'd like to go ahead and read that. "Whereas the Village of Rouses Point is undertaking an extensive sewer project upgrade, and whereas an easement is required from the State of New York for the sewer outfall line which will extend into the waters of Lake Champlain, therefore be it resolved that the mayor be authorized to apply to the State of New York for said easement pursuant to provisions of Article 2, Section 3 of the Public Lands Law." And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
And I'll second, Doc.
Motion made by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Roll call vote. Trustee Huckle. Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And the last thing that I have tonight is I had a conversation this afternoon with both Brian Puckey and Phil about some of the things that are left over from the water project. And I know just in walking around the village the last month or so, people have been stopping me, in particular on Maple Street, and I know it's kind of here we go again, but I think people are very satisfied with what has been done there. But I know that there have been some questions about when the final coat of paving is going to go on, and when the sides of the roads are going to be fixed up, and so on. So, I just wanted to remind everyone that because of the heavy construction going on on Champlain Street, that's the primary reason why the final paving is going to be on hold for a little while on Maple Street. And then, the driveways and the sides of the roads and so on will be attended to. I guess that they're going to do a cleanup before the Fourth of July weekend, but that probably the rest of the work will have to wait until we're able to go ahead and pave that. And then, the other item that we were also discussing was the situation at the village office. And apparently, the final piping has been done through the parking lot. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
And so, we'll be looking forward to again having a clean parking lot at the village office, hopefully sometime in the near future. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay. Brian, would you give us an update on the electrical substation, please?
Yes. I now have most of the line crews working in the new substation. They erected all the new steel in the new substation. We saw some foundations before in the old substation to be able to link them together. But I'm very satisfied on the work that's been done in the last two weeks. I mean, there was a lot of steel on the ground, and now it's up in the air. I know a few of the mayor and a few of the trustees have been up to, you know, at least now they have a vision of what it's going to consist of. I think the work is going very well. That's why, you know, with people that are out and the vacation, they're kind of limited on manpower. We're stretched pretty thin through the village, with Ricky, Champlain Street, and the cleanup. So, people just have that patience with the lawn restoration and anything else that has to be fit, sidewalk repairs. But other than that, I mean, the substation, I think is going very well.
Okay. I just have a quick update on the automatic meter readers. I got a thing from Phil the other day, and they are on order. So, hopefully this fall will be online. We'll be able to go around and read all the meters in the village automatically. And just the other thing I have to report tonight, I'm kind of sad that we don't, we're not having the car show this year. But we do always ask people who own old cars, they are a nice addition to the parade. So, if you want to come up and put your car in the parade, you're welcome. And to other people, we try to keep a list and invite the same people year after year after the parade. Sometimes people slip through the cracks. So, if you haven't been invited, please show up. You can show up between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. The Deligar's Lot, we're going to use the Sportsman's Pier, Montgomery Street, and the Deligar Lot to line the parade up. And I haven't spoken with Mr. Pierre Raymond from St. John's to confirm. Mike's been off for the last couple of days, but it looks like we're going to be online with our band. So, the basic, the nucleus part of the parade will be intact, and we're looking for a good parade this year. So, it's all after the part.
That it?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore.
The water plant got a new generator, or it was out. It runs a plant. For Mr. Puckey, it'll be online this week. Once the plugs are added and everything, the old one will go over service. This one's the new one, Roddy.
This one, the new one was locked. I need my, we missed out on, and we probably have maybe another half a day of pulling a couple more wires, and the service representative from Vermont was more starting to... representative from Vermont was already started up in the low test.
Again, this week you should...
Again, this week you should be running operations.
The next thing is the waterfront floor. I meant what I told you soon as I took office, some people say the floor shifted, some say it's not. We agreed to take shots and set up for a area differently.
Set up last week.
And we're going to take shots, see what exactly is moving or not moving or anything, and we'll solve all that. And my next thing is, we see the local law for, of the year 2004, regarding the speed limit within the village. I'd like to make a motion to authorize a third to publish a legal notice for the public hearing on our next board meeting, which is Tuesday, July 6th, 2004 at 7:00 p.m.
Motion made, the second. Any discussion? Or a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Trustee carries. Is that it?
Yes.
No, thank you, Trustee Moore. Phil?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Arsen.
I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to report that I had to transfer $16,008.98 to EFC on Friday, which is supposed to represent unspent BAM funds towards our water project. They're going to put a hole there for a month and give us interest on it, okay return, and then get the other funding. I just wanted to report that on the water project. I'd like to open up the discussion on sewer project funding. I know Kelly touched on it a little bit, winding down on the water project, but I want the sewer project to go a little bit better than the water project in regards to funding. We kind of went out, we kind of, we did it in certain steps and went out and did these projects in the water part before we actually had our funding set up. And I want, I want the funding for the sewer part to be set up and have a budget approved before, before we go ahead and start working on those projects. And one of the things I wanted into is, we have a bill here, Tisdale Associates, that went to the last meeting for $18,217.50, and this was for professional technical services from August 27, 2000, and December 8, 2002. And the board approved it, but I came to anybody to sign the, sign the bill. And I also have another bill that has not gone to the board. This one also is to Tisdale Associates. This bill here is for engineering services for the pump station, forced main modifications to wastewater system. This is for $67,868.07, and this is for professional and technical services rendered on the subject project from April 1999 to the April 1st, 2003. Now, I don't know what the reasoning is why we're getting bills by year at a time here, but I don't think that's the way they should be doing us for one thing.
And I can make a suggestion for the board. Both of these bills be turned over to our engineer, be checked out, make sure they're correct, and I agree with you, Arsen. I can't understand, I think we should be billed quarterly for engineering services. I understand they can't do it monthly, but quarterly is not asking too much. And when you get a bill like this, five, five years old, you wonder what's going on. How could you run your business if you didn't like stuff for five years and, you know?
I don't say the work hasn't been done, but it's just, how can we go back and verify what's been done?
That's why I want Doug to check these out.
And I'd just like to mention as well, on behalf of the treasurer, the board typically will ask the treasurer where we are in certain projects, and there is no way that he can give anybody an accurate figure if he doesn't have costs such as this incorporated into the figures, and if you find this after the fact, you're never going to have a really true projection of what's happening. So I agree totally that we really need to have more accountability of how these bills are submitted.
Has anyone spoken to John Carr about this latest invoice?
I believe it was being discussed tonight, the night I would the board wanted to do.
We just got this June 18th, which I think was Friday, $67,000.
And the problem with signing the check on, I have the copy of the bills from the last meeting for the $18,217.50. The problem with signing the check is that we want the verification first, is that correct? Or...
Correct.
Okay.
I, I have actually signed the check. It's sitting in the safe, but I need somebody to approve the bill.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the board has as a whole, but usually it's signed off by either the department head or the administrator and nobody wants to sign it.
So you can't...
So I'm not going to...
Release the check.
Correct.
We're going to get a bill, plus the board tells me to.
We're going to get a bill down the road, five years down the road for, you know, I mean, that's, that's not...
No, that's why I want these reviewed.
Yeah.
I want them reviewed.
The check you're holding, Arsen, what's that for?
That's for $18,000.
What, what, what?
Professional technical services rendered between August 27, 2000 and December 8, 2002. It's roof replacement for the wastewater treatment plant. It's for the design phase, the bidding phase, and the construction phase.
And that roof was done in 2002.
I'd like to make a suggestion that even if we have Doug address this on behalf of the village with our engineer, that we also include either Arsen or Phil or both of them in on those discussions. I think someone dealing with the financial aspects of the village should be part of that as well.
They don't have, I don't have any, we're going to have to pay this. There ain't no good ways about it, but I'm not satisfied getting a bill, you know, that's two, three, or four years old.
No, I agree with you, and I think, George, if your suggestion were to be taken to try to get bills on a quarterly basis, it would be very helpful to have Phil or Arsen as part of that program.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I agree.
Starting right away.
I think we also, as I can make a suggestion, that a letter goes to Tisdale telling them what we expect. Do you have a problem if I write such a lot?
But also too, you know, like, before we start doing all these things on the sewer project, I think we should make sure that we are lined up with the funding under the EFC or under the EFC, instead of how we did with the water problem. We had to go out and bond twice and then, you know, for three years, I said, you know, we're going to get a hole and...
That's one of the things that we discussed in our meeting on Thursday, but I think you're right. I think we should definitely follow up and make sure that even in the meeting on the 6th, that that's the first thing that we look at. You, you must have had a conversation with John Carr about that though, because the two of you seem to be right on the same page.
Yes, we talked about it.
Yeah, so hopefully then that'll help it to work out a little more smoothly.
Any other discussion on this?
I, I just have to make another comment. Some of the issues or concerns by Mr. Carr with regard to the water project, and I'm not dumping on John, but was, things were done before the funding was in place. Well, frankly, if you listen to what we have in our hands now, we've done the roof for the sewer project, we've done engineering studies and so on and so forth, so we're basically in the same situation, and this is nothing that is...
Forced maintenance.
Exactly. That's a classic example. I mean, we are, the funding, you know, he is moving, getting the funding going, but this has been a progression since 2000 or before. I just thought I'd mention that.
We actually have two, two bond issues regarding the sewer already.
That are outstanding right now. We already bonded for the sewer project in order to pay for the roof and these items, and we're paying interest on those on a recurring basis. I agree with Mr. Carr, but by the same token, this is not something that we have alone been, been responsible for.
And Arsen, what is your understanding in terms of the timing? Is it a similar process for applying for the sewer project funding as it was for the water project?
It's a similar process, and I've been told that we're going to make the fall pool submission, or submission.
We make the spring, fall, summer, and fall again pool on the water project.
Is there anything else you need from us, Arsen?
No, we're, we're, this is fine.
So maybe we'll know more in the next meeting? At least that's what we discussed on Thursday, sir.
I just have a question for Brian Puckey. Does anybody say anything to you about the fire truck down here? I mean, he put it out for surplus. Anybody show any interest?
We got to advertise it.
I would, I, I talked to Brian about it today. I was gone the week of the meeting. Last week was a busy meeting. I talked to Brian today. I just need some stats on the mileage and what it is, because I have the title or whatever you want to call it, but once I get that from Brian, plus the ladder, then we'll go to the newspaper. I just wanted to have everything before we did, but it should be going out within the next week.
Somebody asked me about it tonight. Somebody over on Malone's interested in it.
Fine.
Yeah, I just, I don't know what it's...
One of the things, we didn't put, I noticed in the minutes of the meeting, I wasn't at the last time, there was no minimum bid put on that, put on the pumper like there was on the ladder. I think there was a minimum bid of $300, but one of the things I will put in the ad that the board of trustees will reserve the right to reject any bid. I mean, we don't want someone coming up with a $5 bid for a truck that's worth $20,000, $25,000. Do you agree with that, Mr. Fire Chief?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
A minimum of $25,000.
Well, I, I don't know if you want to put them in, but I think we should have the right to reserve, to reject.
Okay.
Right? That's what I'm going to put in the paper. And then some of the ads, I've noticed that went on.
Brian. Melissa?
Hi. If anyone has any questions, quality community, so I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Doug, how's that? I need a motion for adjournment.
I like that question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I could open it up to the third, I'm sorry.
How much money is it going to cost the village for the water project? How much money is the village going to spend out of pocket?
At this point, and it's only tentative, maybe 200 grand, and we might be able to get squeezed out of that, but I think it's about 200 grand. Melissa, am I right about we estimate about 200 grand?
On the waterfront, Benny? Well, we're, tomorrow's a very big day because we're meeting with our engineer for updated costs. Phase one and phase two, the ones that we're set on, we actually have zero cash, and they're giving us credit for the underground utilities on Montgomery Street in the park area. We're going to do some crosswalks and we're getting credit for that. We're getting credit for the value of the state dock at $107,000, so all of those things go into our match with the, comes up with a zero cash. Now, what we're proposing on phase three is probably a maximum of $250,000 going in, but we're going in with the understanding that we'd like to try to bring that down. And George is planning on going to Senator Little for a member item that will help reduce our match. There's a grant program through the Department of Transportation that has a better split. It's 80% grant, 20% match that we're, we're going to apply for. So, you know, all of this is, we're kind of making, putting those applications and hoping that we get some good funding back. I don't know if that, that answers your question or... So what, what we're looking at at this point is having improvements, oh, my goodness, probably about in the $1.5 million range in terms of the value of what's being done at the boat launch, the park, and the pier for no more cash cost than $250,000 and hopefully less.
So will that come out of the taxpayers' line?
The, the idea would be that if, if we do have to do that, I shouldn't speak for the board, that that would be bonded over a 10, 15, even potentially 20-year period. And if you'd like, I can, I can give you numbers in terms of what that might, might cost.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
But I, I think that, and to be, to be fair and to be honest with people, I can say to you, phase one, the boat launch at the park, we're pretty good on that in terms of being able to say exactly what the cost would be. The other one's still a work in progress. It, you know, it really is. Tomorrow, we're going to find out how much sheet piling has gone up in cost over this past year. I'm not really looking forward to the answer to that question because, you know, with fuel costs and, and everything, we're, you know, we're going to know more, know more tomorrow.
One of the things, Benny, that we talked about is, is, you know, we're saying at the beginning of the meeting about how the waterfront is an essential part of getting some of the other things that the community members have put together as part of the quality community of the nation, but one of the things that we have as a board have talked about is the necessity to plan for what the village can afford and what the timeframe is that we can afford it, and to take our time with whatever is done so that we're being very responsible to the taxpayers with whatever cash contribution will be necessary after our matching lines. So it's not the kind of thing that we're going to jump in and, and try to fund everything right away if the village cannot afford to do.
Well, that's what I was wondering. If the village is going to go along with it like, say, next year or whatever and not have the money for it, you know? So, so you could put it off a year or so if you didn't have the money, you were saying?
My understanding is that the timeline can fit what the village can afford to do at the time at each of these phases. Am I correct in saying that?
As a matter of fact, just to give you an idea, the grant money that we're talking about using for the boat launch, Benny, that grant was applied for in 2001, awarded in 2002, and we hope to go to construction probably be spring of 2005. See, the lead time on these things is huge. We're applying for a grant that won't be awarded until next spring at the earliest, and then you get three, a good three years to work on it, even before you ever have, would have to go out and bond anything. And so there's a really long horizon on this, but, you know, I, I fully expect that the board will want to hear from me at every step, how, you know, what the funding looks like, what the, the cost is going to be, because it is. I mean, we're talking big ticket items. There's no doubt about that.
We did check Benny with Bond Council, Arsen called, and for projects such as what we're doing down there, we can go out for up to a 20-year bond, so it's not like it's going to be one, two, five, even 10 years. It looks good for probably a 20-year bond, which would help bring the cost per thousand down.
One other question I got is, the sidewalks on Maple Street, is that still in limbo or what?
I don't think it's in limbo. I don't know what, what decisions were made with, with Luck Brothers and Carr last week when I was gone.
Yeah, he had a meeting with Luck Brothers, and we're still waiting to see the final written draft, the final on that.
No, Brian had a conversation today.
Oh, yeah. I talked to John Carr this evening, and the meeting would be on Thursday to go over that. We'll just blast you there, because there is some low spots, but what might concern with the trip hazard. I mean, you know, it needs to be fixed. If John Carr is going to talk to Ted Luck to get it fixed, I mean, we can't really wait for him. If we have to, we use our own village groups to repair at least the trip hazards and charge them for material and labor.
We're not going to rip those all up. I mean, we talked about that. We spent $100,000. We're not going to rip those up. What do you want to say?
Well, there's some areas that are really low, which John Carr actually said that he would pay to get them replaced. It was his mistake. Who's going to do it? I don't know.
Do we take those out, put stuff underneath and put them back in, or you have to be...
No way.
Have to be reformed, yeah?
If I put sidewalks back, it'll be like this. So I have, we have a meeting on Thursday with John Carr, myself, and we're going to go walk the whole street and actually talk about what's going to be done, because I like to see something done within the next week or so.
That lost money, that $100,000, put those sidewalks in.
Anything else? Motion for adjournment.
Got it.
Signed by Trustee Hoprow. Because nobody wants their adjournment second.
Second.
Trustee Jarvis, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? 758, or 48.